And. All this meeting of the salary board. Today, January nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, it's nine thirty a.m. You'll start with a roll call of members present, please.
Commissioner Eichelberger, Commissioner Fauci.
I'm here.
Commissioner Dees Lippel.
Present.
Controller Whitcomb.
Here.
Thank you. All right, that moves us into item three, which is the public comment period we have for all meetings. Is there any comment for the salary? Okay, online, we're here, okay.
I'm very excited. That's a good topic.
Well, uh, okay, that brings us to item four. We have the minutes in hand of our meeting of January five, and we'll be looking for action on approval of that.
I might corruption approve the minutes of January five.
It has moved in second. There's no further questions or comments. All in favor in the capo say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, item five is the salary board actions that were previously reviewed.
I'm going to approve those salary board actions.
I second.
Moved and seconded. There's no further comments or questions. All in favor in the capo say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, item six is other business. Anything additional to come? You're none, so entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Good, we stand adjourned. Pass the meeting on. Commissioners. And. We'll initiate with the pledge allegiance. Okay. A pledge of allegiance is.
The Republic stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with the great justice for all.
We will, for those who are unaware, we've moved toward consent agenda format. You'll forgive us if we're still working out a couple of the kinks on it. It's pretty good. Did, but now the meeting hands over to.
Actually, Commissioner, I'm going to hand the meeting back over to you. I take over at consent agenda. Agenda item four.
I see. Okay, so at this point, so a couple more kicks to work out. All right, so.
Keeping us on our toes.
Yeah, so we called me, or we need roll call members present, please.
Commissioner Eichelberger, Commissioner Fauci, I'm here. Commissioner Dees Lippel.
Present.
Okay, very good. Item three is the public comment period. And the way this works is anybody wishes to make comment on any agenda item, it's appropriate to do so when that item is considered by the board. And otherwise, the set, the public comment section is open for members of the public to provide. Any thoughts and opinions on any matter that's not currently listed on the agenda, so. We will entertain any public comment on. In that framework now.
Yeah.
Owen, Owen, okay, that concludes item three, and that moves us forward to consent agenda, which is now.
Okay, Commissioners, thank you. Agenda item number four is our consent agenda. Uh, we actually have agenda items A through H, which are routine items that do not appear to be controversial in nature, nor do they seem to require any additional discussion. If anybody would like to discuss any of these agenda items, uh, they may do so by requesting the item be removed from the consent agenda, and the item would be considered separately prior to the regular agenda. Yeah, I hear no requests, so Commissioners, I would ask for one motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second.
Seconded, all in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. Agenda item number five is our regular agenda, and I'll start with, uh, A, which is discussion and approval of a CDBG commercial revitalization and shop setting loan application for Revolutionary Hot Sauce for fifty thousand dollars to relocate and expand the business at thirty South Market Street in Mechanicsburg, and we have Rebecca Europe here with us.
Hi, and I'm Tim Myers.
Hi.
Revolutionary Hot Sauce, I've been doing it for about five years now. I've never taken a loan up to this point, but it's kind of time to grow the business, and the opportunity that was presented by Chef Mills at Smokin' Pickles, it's just a great opportunity. Too good to pass up, I would say, so. Uh, we're looking to, you know, bring more business to the downtown Mechanicsburg, get a great restaurant in there, also be able to sell my hot sauce in there as well, and kind of incorporate that into the menu, and even possibly a nano brewery in the future. So, yeah, thank you so much.
Yeah, any questions for Tim?
Is this you?
That's me.
Minus the peppers.
Peppers are a little more scary.
Good morning. Well, this story has a very familiar ring to it because it's not the first time that the county has financed a young entrepreneur looking to make his move, his or her move from the garage, the kitchen, or the basement to their first bricks and mortar location. And it begins like so. Tim Myers, this met founded Hot Head Sauce in twenty eighteen, starting out with three sauces. Like the pepper plants in his garden, the business has grown, and now he produces fifteen different varieties, and the name has changed to Revolutionary Hot Sauce. You'll find his sauces at shops like Southside Deli, and dishes you've had at Smokin' Pickles or Troves, at farmers markets like on the square, at events and festivals across the state and beyond. Last week he was in Pottsville, a couple weeks ago in Baltimore, it's a very heavy schedule, and that's only going to get worse, or better, depending on your perspective. He'll move his production facility from his kitchen table to thirty South Market Street, and you'll remember that address because four and a half years ago, you approved financing to turn what had been a problem property and a real eyesore into a magnet for our downtown, and we're very excited to be able to to continue that tradition and make more improvements. He'll open a restaurant, he'll have a retail shop there where you can buy his sauces and some companion products. A restaurant featuring his sauces, or not, your choice, you know, we don't mean to be heavy-handed here. And add to the outdoor dining deck, as well as plant a garden. The grassy side yard will sprout peppers for his own picking and become sort of maybe take the place of crispy bacon, the pig, as an attention getter and a magnet for the location, because you'll see his peppers growing in the in the grassy area of the garden, as well as in containers on the dining deck. That'll be an amusement for samplers before and after while they're grown, and then afterwards, and sort of an interactive, eco, organic sort of experience. Like he said, he's a brewer, and he's worked across the region. His plans include the small batch nano brewery, which would be the first in the burb. We'll be able to once again say made in Mechanicsburg. This request is for fifty thousand dollars, a CDBG financing request to acquire the existing equipment, which you financed not a few years ago, including the coveted, everybody wants one, nobody has one grill, vent, hood, and fire suppression system that's already in place. The loan will go to acquire that equipment, but also add some additional equipment, fixtures, and furnishings. We've partnered with Mechanicsburg Borough on this project, and they have approved a forty thousand dollar loan from their program, and Myers will put in thirty-five thousand dollars of his own toward the project. The loan carries a two percent interest rate amortized over twenty-five years with a balloon payment at seven years. We will have the third lien position on residential real estate, home where he lives, and a personal guarantee plus liens on all of the equipment, fixtures, furnishings, existing and new. One full-time job is required to be created or part of the equivalent within two years of settlement. He has bigger plans to open with more than that at the get-go, and we look forward for your approval of this loan request to help Revolutionary Hot Sauce march to Mechanicsburg and open a full in somewhere around April first.
Any, any questions for Rebecca?
And we always appreciate your consideration and your support of our community and business development services.
Right, I was pretty thorough. I have no question. Okay, so we're looking for actualness today.
So I will move to approve the CDBG commercial revitalization and shop setting loan application for Revolutionary Hot Sauce for fifty thousand dollars to relocate and expand the business at thirty South Market Street in Mechanicsburg.
Second.
Okay, seconded. All in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Good luck to you, sir. Thank you so much.
We'll see you at our next meeting as well. You'll be back.
Well, there's a, there's a story there too, so.
We, we won't see you.
You won't see me.
We'll see someone.
We'll see someone, and yes, that request is worth coming.
Right, that timing.
February second.
Timing.
Thank you.
Well, we'll see you in the future.
Your honor.
All right, so we'll move then to B, which is discussion and approval of the home ARP allocation plan for Cumberland County Housing Redevelopment Authority. I'll call in Heather Tidwell to discuss.
All right, well, I will make a quick introduction. So to the Commissioners, you already received as a county CDBG and home money. Um, with the rescue plan funds, essentially the county received another one point nine million for home ARP. It's slightly different. Uh, the focus is mostly on homelessness and housing stability, but like everything with HUD, it requires the county to adopt the plan, and so I'd like to introduce Heather Tidwell, our community development grants manager, and so Heather has put together a wonderful plan and has gone through great lengths to interact with, uh, many service providers in this county, so I will let her go over this, and I, basically from there, if you are so inclined, we would love to see it adopted, but I'll let Heather go ahead.
So, the home AARP is two-month overhaul, so it's a lot there. Luckily HUD gave us a very nice template to work off of. This is a little bit different from the CDBG action plans that you normally see because they required a consultation period. To do that, there was a call for a public meeting in which we only had one service provider attend. That was a little bit of a harsh kind of factor, but then it came out that there were other meetings and things like that happening, so I went and did a one-on-one meeting with almost every single person consulted in this plan, and had hour-long discussions with everyone on what they are seeing boots on the ground to see what is really the condition in homeless services, where is the need, and what would they do with this funds? Through that, there was different categories in which the funding could be added, in which majority of it went to supportive services. That then helps our homeless service providers pay for payroll, be able to get more staff in to help the overflow in need that our case managers are overworked, are working long hours, and really they need more people. This money is a quick influx to be able to help with that. Also, then it helps with any supplies that they need. Food, clothes, blankets, tents, things like that can be purchased off of these funds. Another part of it is then the development of affordable housing. While we tried to really look at different projects that were out there, we made the decision to add it into home applications. The next eight home apps that come in, we will give them a fifty K grant to help with inflation. That way that they can still be able to take the loan amount that they need in home, but then be able to keep their costs down and have a little bit of grant to try to keep the housing as affordable as possible. That came from a recommendation from HUD of the best way they saw to do this and be able to really benefit the county as much as possible. We also tried to then during the consultation, ask people if they knew about a community development block grant. Many said no, and that that, those funds and application, they could be used to fix their facilities. So we had many people who are now going to apply in our March application to do the very well-needed work they need to help with improving facilities, maintenance, flooring, ADA improvements and things like that, to serve more homeless communities, especially the youth at risk. And that was a huge part of this too, is there are a lot of youths, and so we were trying to adapt as much as possible to help as many people as possible.
Any questions?
Do we need for action on this? So.
I'll make a motion to approve the home ARP application plan for the Cumberland County Housing Redevelopment Authority as presented.
I second.
It's moved in seconded. No questions. All reaction, all in favor to keep by saying aye.
Aye.
We're not opposed, passing. Very nice.
Thanks, Heather. We move then to C, which is discussion and approval of resolution twenty twenty-three dash two regarding establishing the Cumberland County Housing Redevelopment Authority as a designate for the whole home repair program, and we have Mary Gooding here to discuss. Hi, Mary.
Housing authority day, isn't it?
It is.
So. The state received again ARP allocations, and they put together something called the home, whole homes repair program. Essentially, what this is, is additional money to programs that we already have, so it's focused on homeowners and landlords, rent individuals under eighty percent AMI, so one person in Cumberland County, that's fifty-two thousand dollars, a family of four, seventy-four thousand, our last income. So. For a homeowner, it would be a grant. We can choose the amount, but up to fifty thousand dollars to repair their home. The county currently has a homeowner rehab program, very similar, so the structure would be incredibly similar. Then the other piece of this program would be to offer up to fifty thousand dollars again for small landlords to repair their basically units, which is timely since we just created the small landlord revolving loan fund, so essentially we can run both simultaneously. Uh, there is an option for loan forgiveness in the program. There are four very stringent criterias landlords need to meet for that to be triggered. Uh, so we'll have to see if that's something that can actually be feasible for any landlord, truthfully. But, again, the county has already been designated an amount of money. We're not sure what it is. As part of the application process, it allows the county to designate an applicant. Uh, so it just felt that it would be beneficial if uh, Cumberland County would designate the redevelopment authority to be the applicant, to put in the single app under our UBI and under our EIN numbers, and then to just move forward with administering the program. Uh, so, so that's what the resolution before you is today, and again, the county has already been designated money. It's just a matter of us applying to DCED to get it. Not sure what that amount is. They can tell us, but we will be informed later on.
And then just to add, the reason why the amount is unknown is counties have until January thirty-first to apply. Any county that doesn't apply, that money that they were allocated will be, um, shared among all of the applicants. So the money, the amount of money is up in the air until April the first.
Yes.
Any questions for Mary or for, um, either Keith or myself, assisted with the, uh, process of having the resolution prepared?
I've had a number of constituents reach out to me and ask me about this.
Yes, it's, there's been a lot of news articles about it, um, so I think there's going to be heavy demand, and we certainly can push it through. Very similarly, very similar to our other programs, it's just going to be a matter of running the same guidelines, but just knowing on the back end which funds we're pulling from. But yes, it's, there's been a lot of publicity put out, particularly, I think, around, uh, the, um, southeastern side of the state. A lot of news articles, so yes.
Senator Rosman put it in his weekly newsletter, and I think that's what triggered some Cumberland County constituency to reach out about it. Um, but this is, if I'm understanding this correctly, Mary, this is available for more than landlords.
This is available for homeowners, so homeowners can do rehab with it, and we can also do for landlords repairs. The landlords run into the loan world, the homeowners run into the grant world, and then there's a forgiveness of the loan for a landlord if they meet a pretty heavy criteria, to be honest with you.
Thank you.
No problem.
Say, heavy criteria, unrealistic criteria?
I mean, it's, well, there's, they say in the guidelines, all four, one of which is they must own the property and keep it affordable for a fifteen-year period after, and usually small landlords tend to, um, divest after so many years, or if you're a senior citizen and you you fix up a property and there's a probability of being holding it for another fifteen. One of the criteria is you have to have fifteen years prior, no code issues, so you're talking already about somebody who's been a landlord fifteen years. Now add on, so there's, there's some that makes it a little bit, uh, challenging, and so.
If they inherited code issues.
Well, well, this is DCD's guideline, so I imagine more will come out as they sort of filter through the nuances of this.
Right, that answers my question, thank you. Okay, uh, there's no further questions. We're looking for action on this today.
So I will move to approve the resolution twenty twenty-three dash two establishing Cumberland County Housing Redevelopment Authority as the designate for the whole home repair program.
Second.
All right, moved in seconded. All in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Okay, we'll move to agenda, um, item D, and I'll call him Kim Witten to discuss the contracts for H B Community Services. Kim?
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. Uh, this addendum is to increase the hourly rate uh, for the agency to provide, uh, personal care and, uh, home support to eligible consumers in our options program.
Any questions for him?
Okay, so we're looking for action on that as well.
Yeah, make a motion that we approve the contract addendum for watching over us on care as presented.
I second.
Seconded. All in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, next we have Jamie, thanks, Kim. Uh, next we have Jamie Ryber with us from Children and Youth to discuss, um, a series of contracts. Jamie?
Morning, Commissioners. Uh, the first one is Genesis Home of New Beginnings. Uh, this is our twenty-two twenty-three contract. They are increasing their rates from two thirty-nine fifty-seven to three hundred dollars per day. Um, they're still well below the state maximum allowable of four hundred and three dollars per day. Um, they have not increased their rates since their inception in twenty eighteen, uh, and they are citing personnel, operational costs, insurance, and, um, all of the recreational activities that they, um, make available to the youth with them, um, as reasons for the need to increase their rate. Uh, City Mission is an addendum to their current contract. Uh, we are adding an additional level, Hope Specialized. Um, it is increasing one hundred dollars from the, um, other rate from two seventy-nine to three seventy-nine. Uh, this is due to a specific trial that is placed in their facility, um, that really has nowhere else to go, but is requiring much more intensive uh, care than anticipated, um, so to help cover those costs, uh, we are increasing that rate for this specific trial, and we're also adding one-on-one supervision, um, so that the child can be monitored at all times. Uh, the next one is for community service groups. This is for their YFAX program, which is Youth Fire Setting Assessment Consultant Treatment Services. Uh, this is a new contract for us, uh, and it is just what it says, um, for fire setting, um, treatment. These, um, services are covered by medical assistance, so our hope is that we will pay for a short period of time while the, the child um, is enrolled in medical assistance with the help of the program, uh, and then it will flip over and be funded by, uh, Medicaid. Uh, the last one is for Shred It. Uh, this is our, uh, renewal to our previous contract. Uh, this contract is good for five years. Um, the only increase to the contract was, um, additional banker boxes went from six dollars and ten cents to six dollars and ninety-nine cents. Um, however, we are adding an additional console, um, this year, uh, to hopefully alleviate all of those extra boxes that we seem to accrue. And we are guaranteed, uh, no rate increase for the five years.
Any questions for Jamie?
Good. Action on this.
So I will move to approve the contracts for children and youth as set forth on the agenda. Uh, item five, letter E.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie. Uh, Ryan Simon is with us to discuss the contract for drug and alcohol. Ryan?
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, Malvern Institute would be a new inpatient drug and alcohol provider for us. Um, they provide some specialty tracks, uh, in treatment that our case management unit, um, expressed interest in us, uh, gaining access to.
Any questions for Ryan?
Okay, we're looking for motion on this.
I make a motion to approve the contract. Alcohol, alcohol with Malvern Institute as presented.
I second.
Okay, moved in seconded. All in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh, agenda item G, we have Holly Sherman to discuss the contracts for human resources. Holly?
Good morning, Commissioners. The first contract is for RX Saving Solutions. We did discuss this back in August as a, um, option to look at additional savings for our self-insured medical plan. What this is, is a, a program where it's voluntary for employees to participate, but RX Saving Solutions will do outreach to, um, county employees to help them identify lower-cost medications, um, therefore lowering our prescription cost to not only the county, but to employees themselves, given the fact that we have a qualified high deductible health plan. Um, it is projected a hundred thousand dollars over, um, over a hundred thousand dollars of savings over three years for this contract. The second contract is a, um, up, an extension or renewal with Brownstead Temp Services. They have increased their rates for the various lines of temp employees that we do occasionally get from them, um, for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three contract.
Any questions on our devices?
Hey, looking for a motion.
I will move to approve the contracts for human resources as set forth on the agenda at, uh, number five, item G.
I'll second.
Okay, moved in seconded. All in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next, we have Kirk Stoner to discuss the addendum for liquid fuels finance. Kirk?
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, this is change order six for the Hurstler Bridge Project. For thirteen thousand dollars, this was to repair additional, uh, steel beam damage that we found as we tore the bridge apart and reassembled it.
Any questions for Kirk?
Okay. Yeah, make a motion to approve the contract with Tinsley Construction regarding, uh, for liquid fuels finance.
I second.
Moved in seconded. All favor in the capo say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, Kirk is also with us to discuss the contract for planning.
Commissioners, this contract is with Michael Baker International. They'll serve as the consultant to assist us with our comprehensive plan update. They were selected from our pre-selected consultant list that we worked for Planning Commission on last year, so that through our Cumberland Plans grant applications, we have a certain list of, of consultants that are pre-qualified that have done good work in the county, and we select from that based upon the assignment. In this case, we've selected Michael Baker.
Questions for Kirk?
No.
All in favor? We need a motion, sorry.
I will move to approve the contract for the planning, uh, with Michael Baker International.
Second.
Who can second it? All in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, uh, agenda item J, we have Travis Shank with us from the prison to discuss the contract with Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police. Morning, Warden. You're muted.
Yes.
Sorry about that. We'll start over again. Good morning, Stacy. Good morning, Commissioners. This is the prison's annual agreement with the, the Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police Association, which covers the maintenance and service for the CPN and LiveScan instruments used in central booking. LiveScan is used for fingerprinting new criminal defendants. It's also required to, for the initial Megan's Law registration, background checks on new employees, and applicant fingerprints for new police officers, and most importantly, it allows us to positively identify suspects whose ID is in question. The CPN is, excuse, the CPN is our mugshot system. The cost of, for twenty twenty-three is thirteen thousand one hundred and sixty-four dollars, an increase of a hundred and sixty-four dollars from two thousand and twenty-two. The increase is due to the rate increase for technicians being called out for repairs.
Any questions for the Warden?
Okay, I'll take a motion. Yeah, so make a motion to approve the contract with Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police for the county prison.
I second.
It's moved in seconded. All in favor? It's moved and seconded, all in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Agenda item K, uh, are contracts that have been completed by grantees of the Recovery Grant Program. Uh, not only have they signed their contract, but they have completed all other requirements, including establishing uh, performance measures, which have been approved by our subject matter experts. Any questions?
Okay.
I'm gonna move to approve uh, the contracts for the Recovery Grant Program as set forth on the agenda, item five, uh, at K.
Second. We've been seconded, for the questions, all in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye. Okay, agenda item L is recycling and waste, and Justin Miller is with us and to discuss the um, contract for from the PA Department of Environmental Protection. Morning, Justin.
Good morning. This is the uh, required application for registration for our twenty-twenty-three Household Hazardous Waste Disposal Program plans. Uh, very similar to twenty-twenty-two, we're uh, recommending four events in twenty-twenty-three, which would be Thursday, April thirteenth, Saturday, June seventeenth, Saturday, August nineteenth, and Thursday, October twenty-sixth. Thursday events would run from eleven to five, and the Saturday events from nine till three. We would allow four hundred participants uh, per event, just like we did in twenty-twenty-two. Moving on to the most important part, as you're aware, we charge a per-pound fee uh, to customers who come through the event. Uh, the contractor for hazardous waste is gonna have a price increase in twenty-twenty-three. So at the uh, November Authority Meeting, um, I had proposed raising our price from fifty cents a pound to sixty cents a pound. Um, the members actually got hung up between sixty and seventy and couldn't agree. Uh, they asked me to do more research, which was actually very good, so I built some models um, to evaluate the data. Uh, and what it showed is once we go past a certain point, all we end up doing is charging our customers more at the expense of less grant money. Uh, it also showed that at fifty-five cents a pound, uh, we would incur about a nine hundred dollar additional cost to the solid waste fund. But um, it would mitigate the uh, difference between the user fees and the grant money, essentially maximize grant money for the residents. So because of that, at the December meeting, the Authority Board recommended that we charge fifty-five cents a pound um, during the uh, events in twenty-twenty-three. Doing that, just let me give you a quick summary here. Total program costs would be a hundred, I'm gonna give you rough numbers here, about a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Total eligible grant cost would be a hundred and twenty-seven thousand. We would bring in sixty-one thousand in grant money. And the residents would contribute sixty-five thousand, leaving us, the solid waste fund would have to cover uh, about seven thousand dollars of program cost. And a thousand of that is due to that fifty-five versus sixty. Once again, it maximizes the the grant revenue we can bring in for our residents.
Any questions for Justin?
Okay, so, Judge, you're looking for action to approve the, the uh, fee increase.
The fee, well, I would say the application for registration, because in there, Gary, I have a statement that says we will, we will charge fifty-five cents a pound to the residents.
Is, is that in the contract we have here? I don't see that. Fifty-five cents, that is.
I, I believe it's in the actual paperwork that would be behind the original of of the cover sheet, um, but it it is not on the cover sheet itself. If you'd like to see, I can pull the um, paperwork. I'm gonna ask a question about this, and maybe I have the wrong agenda, and maybe I just am not seeing correctly. But I do not see this on the agenda. It's L, it's listed as a contract, it should be listed as a grant. That's.
What this does is um, it actually makes us eligible to apply for grants. They, they will only
Thanks.
They will only reimburse us once we know true cost. So after each event, I will come back to you with an application with actual numbers um, to submit to them. This is just registering our program with them, so they know who we're using, when we're gonna do our events, and I just wanted to make you aware that to uh, cover the cost that the contractor price increase is gonna cause, uh, the the authorities recommend that we move from fifty cents a pound to fifty-five cents a pound.
Justin, are you looking for approval of this contractor grant, which would include a price increase to fifty-five cents a pound?
Yeah, i- in the uh, application for reimbursement package, you have to include a health and safety plan um, and other information, and and I have a statement in there, the days we'll do the events, and that we will char- be charging our residents fifty-five cents a pound.
Okay, so if you do a motion today, commissioners, I would recommend that you do a motion, if you're going to prove it, to approve the grant documents for recycling and waste, which includes a increase of two fifty-five cents per pound. Am I making sense?
We have the application.
Yeah.
Right, which, which includes a price increase to fifty-five cents.
Okay.
That sounds. They got it handled. And I'll make a motion that we approve the submission, the P A Department, the E P application for registration for twenty-twenty-three Household Hazardous Waste Program, which will include an increase of collection price from fifty to fifty-five cents a pound.
I second that motion.
Okay, it is moved and seconded. Are there any further questions? Um, call it, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Judge, good work on the due diligence on the pricing.
Thank you, thank you, and a great, great motion, Vince, that was perfect.
It happens occasionally.
All right, so Justin is actually also covering the next agenda item with this to discuss and request approval for the submission of the revised Waste Management Plan on response to the Pennsylvania D E P review comments that we received uh, last year.
Correct, so at the end of August, we submitted our uh, proposed plan twenty-twenty-two, twenty-thirty-two. D E P took two months to review it and um, submitted some comments, which I expected. In my opinion, they were relatively minor, seventeen comments. I worked with the authority uh, at the November and December meetings to uh, address their comments. Um, I put together a, a list of their comments, uh, what we did to address their comments, including revisions to sections of the plan. I think, I think you were provided a copy of that. Uh, but at the December meeting, the authority recommended we send the revised plan uh, to the commissioners for approval to resubmit to D E P. And that's the point we're at right now.
Any questions for Justin?
Yeah.
Judge, were we surprised by the nature of the comments? I looked at them, I'm like can't figure out why they were really even an issue.
Yeah, yeah, the um, yes, I would, my answer would be yes, uh, but but I, I think they, you know, they wanna show that they're, they're doing their, their review. Uh, but none of the comments were about, you know, capacity or anything major. It was a lot of background information, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we sorry, we need a motion, right?
I'm gonna move to approve submission of the revised Waste Management Plan in response to the P A D E P review comments.
I'll say. Okay, it's moved and seconded. If there's no further questions, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, we have John Fitter with us to discuss the contract or the grant um, acceptance contract uh, for vector control.
Good morning. This is the twenty-twenty-three mosquito-borne disease control grant. It's an E-grant. Amount is one hundred and four thousand, seven sixty-nine dot seventy-four. It's the same amount that uh, when we submitted our application, so nothing's changed. The grant amount does include uh, a line item uh, of thirty-six hundred dollars to use for a tick survey from April to August. And there's a little bit of extra money from uh, an increase from last year for a salary adjustment and addition of some uh, some additional uh, mosquito control products. That's it.
Any questions for John? Hey.
No questions. John, I have one comment. I just wanna, as, as a guy who started his career in advertising, I wanna congratulate you for your subliminal messaging to the commissioners with the big word approve here on the screen, so, all right, uh, we need a motion.
I make a motion uh, to approve the contract for vector control, actually the grant, the P mosquito-borne disease control grant program twenty-twenty-three, grant acceptance of one hundred four thousand, seven sixty-nine, seventy-four cents.
I second that motion.
Okay, so we've been seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Eric's.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, John. Uh, that concludes our contract, so we'll move then to agenda item O, which is um, a grant recommendation for a twenty-twenty-two land partnership grant. And I'll call in Stephanie Williams to discuss.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, everyone. Um, as I was looking over my notes this morning, I realized that this is the tenth year that Cumberland County will be uh, distributing land partnerships grant, so a milestone here for us. Um, as you probably recall, the funds for this grant program come from the Marcella shale fees that we receive. Um, in fall of twenty-twenty-two, we uh, accepted grant applications and um, we received a total of nine applications for consideration. It was largely municipalities, eight municipalities and nonprofit, and one nonprofit. Um, grant requests ranged from roughly fifteen thousand to fifty-seven thousand dollars. In total this year to distribute, we have two hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and seven dollars. Um, as per usual, we did receive more requests than we have available in funding. Uh, total requests was over three hundred and thirty thousand. So we did put together a grant committee that um, reviewed all the grant applications, looking at the eligibility of the project, consistency with the county planning documents, uh, overall benefits to the community, um, was the project financially feasible, meaning that they have match in place? And then just the overall quality and completeness of the application. Uh, based on those reviews, the committee deck did recommend funding of all of the grant applications, um, some at partial funding and some at full funding. Uh, and those requests, or I'm sorry, those grant recommendations are outlined in uh, a spreadsheet that you have there today. Um, but we are seeking your authorization of the committee recommendations.
Any questions for Stephanie?
I have a question. Stephanie, the uh, the committee, how often do we change out those members? How are they, have we made any significant changes there in the ten years? Is that do we have the names of those individuals? I don't think that's been provided anytime lately.
Um, I'm, I have them in front of me, happy to share with them with you now. Um, I will say generally, um, they have uh, been similar representative organizations. Uh, for example, the Planning Commission has members on the committee. We've uh, swapped out various individuals as they, their schedules are able to participate. So we have Ed Franco and Heather Schweitzer um, with the Visitors Bureau. Uh, this year, Kristen Rao participated. Previously, Shereen had participated. Um, I don't know if Rebecca is still in the room. Uh, Rebecca Yerick has been a, a, has been on our committee for, for uh, quite a few years. And uh, her experience with grant programs in the communities has been a great asset. And we also have uh, Gail Whitwer with the Partnership for Better Health, and she has been in, on for several years. And then, of course, Kirk and I uh, participate in the meetings.
You forward that list to the commission?
Absolutely.
Well, I have. Any other questions? So we need a motion?
Yeah.
I'm going to move to approve the twenty-twenty-two land partnerships grant recommendations as presented to the board this morning.
I'll say. Moving seconded, all in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Hey, Stephanie is also with us today to discuss the uh, certification of funding for the twenty-twenty-three farmland preservation program.
Okay, so it's um, that time of year again, where we have to make our intentions known to the Department of Agriculture with respect to how much funding we intend to put into the farmland preservation program. Um, so I have prepared for you um, the certification form that we are required to submit and can, you know, details the funding there, but in total, the certification would be uh, one million, five hundred sixteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars. And uh, before anyone falls off their chairs, I know that's not the number that was in the budget, but there's, there's more to it than that. Um, it, it actually, that only includes eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the general fund. Um, the remainder of the funds come from private donations to the program, so this year or last year, we did get fifteen hundred dollars uh, from the general public. And uh, we are fortunate to be able to certify three hundred and, or I'm sorry, five hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars that we received from Silver Spring Township for their partnership on the Moyer Farms. So those funds have already been spent, but we can certify them to the state and get match money. So I would expect that we will get um, you know, at least for every dollar, you know, a dollar twenty, potentially a dollar thirty. So uh, their partnership is bringing back to Cumberland County, you know, five, six hundred thousand dollars in state funds, which we are very grateful for. Um, we are also able to certify a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars in interest that's collected from the twenty-twenty-two clean and green uh, penalties. And that's uh, by statute is uh, required to come to our program. So that is where in total, we get the one point five million dollars. Um, I would expect to uh, be able to um, based on prior year estimates, uh, approximately two point five, two point six million dollars in state funds. So we should have a robust program in twenty-twenty-three.
Any questions for Stephanie?
Stephanie, the interest from clean and green, is that compared to past years somewhat high?
Yes, yes. Um, I believe last year it was only sixty or seventy thousand dollars, so it, it is a significant increase. Um, if I recall from looking at the figures, there was a couple of pretty large conversions that um, contributed significantly to that figure.
Jeff, just so I understand, so we have fifteen hundred dollars in, in private donation?
That's correct.
Okay, at one point eight million, we have fifteen hundred in private donation, the rest is all compulsory, so. Let me ask this, do we actually do any solicitation for this program for private donations, or is that just something that falls into our lap?
Um, admittedly, the, the efforts at fundraising have been passive. Uh, when we attend, you know, events, we'll take our brochure along, they're always here in the lobby. Um, but there hasn't been an active fundraising campaign now.
It's my question is, are we, are we missing even passive opportunities to maybe increase that number above fifteen hundred dollars?
Um, you know, there probably are, are other places we could put our donation brochures and uh, perhaps work with communications to do some um, social media posts as might be appropriate for, for us. I, admittedly, um, our funds are down, the private donations are down a bit this year. There's years that it's been as high as ten thousand, three or four thousand is more typical. Perhaps it's just a sign of the times with difficult economic times.
Stephanie, we're getting the state allocation, it's just, looks like it's just under two point six million, correct?
Correct.
And we're also getting federal funds of about six hundred and sixty-six thousand. They were awarded in twenty-twenty-two, but not received till this year.
Yes, so the, the federal funds, we still don't have them in hand. They come to us on a reimbursement basis, but the final sheet in your packet is looking at what I would expect the, you know, the overall full picture to look like. Assuming those funds are reimbursed to us in twenty-twenty-three.
Funding has no impact at all on state application, correct?
The federal funding? Is that what the question was? Correct. It just gets deposited in our state account.
For motion. Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve certification of funding for the twenty-twenty-three farmland preservation program as presented.
I second.
Let's move it seconded. For the questions, all in favor to keep us saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next. Thanks, Stephanie. The next several agenda items are capital project requests, and we'll start with the first request from IMTO for phone system upgrades. I'm calling Adam Green to discuss.
Hi, good morning, commissioners. IMTO, we need to replace the now end-of-life components. They're the primary components of the entire county's phone system. Cisco has announced end-of-life on these products. Along with the project, we're going to be adding some additional redundancy to the phone system that we need to have. Because of supply chain issues, we have up to a hundred and eighty-day lead times on these products. So the, the amount of the project is estimated at a hundred and five thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Any questions for Adam?
Just for motion.
I'm going to move to approve the capital project request for IMTO, which is for a phone system upgrade at the main courthouse with a total project cost of one hundred and five thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Second. Okay, move it seconded. All in favor to keep by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners.
Next, we have Charlie Hall with us to discuss the capital project request for camera upgrades from the Coroner's Office. Morning.
Good morning, commissioners. This is a project to replace our aging camera fleet. We use our cameras heavily on a daily basis. And some of them, most of them are ten to twelve years old. We're starting to have some problems with a few of them. And you can't get them repaired or replaced that easily. So this is a project to replace all our cameras. So we have the upgraded system cameras. And this cost will be coming out of my Act one twenty-two funds.
Questions, Charlie?
Charlie, what's your guess as to how long these cameras last?
They're good for twelve to fifteen years in that, in that range anyway. So and the new, the new Nikon cameras that I'm looking to purchase are the mirrorless cameras, and they have a longer lifespan.
Make a motion to approve capital requests, capital project requests from the Coroner's Office in the amount of twenty-one thousand, nine hundred.
I second.
Okay, move it seconded. All in favor to keep us saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners.
The last capital project request is from facilities, and it is related to MDJ Friedman's move. And I'll call him Brent Durham to discuss.
Good morning, commissioners. Stacy, I think you missed one, number S or letter S?
The agenda's been amended, but thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay.
That's okay. That's okay.
Yeah, so good morning, everyone. This is a revision to the original capital request for the MDG, MDJ Friedman renovation project. I'm here requesting an additional thirty-five thousand dollars to complete the project. We experienced some significant product price increases. Also, after receiving the engineer drawings, the scope of the project changed in a few areas, driving up our costs considerably. And we ran into a few unexpected challenges, such as a rock vein under the concrete floor where we were placing a bathroom. For these reasons is why the additional capital is being requested for the project.
Any questions for Brett?
Or motion?
I will move to approve the capital project request for facilities. This is the MDJ Friedman move with a total project cost of one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, move it seconded. All in favor to keep us saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
That takes us to agenda item T, which is Commissioners Liaison Reports. I'll start by calling on Commissioner Eichelberger.
Just a handful of items. We, we heard from earlier of the recycling issues. Those are handled now. There is no authority meeting this month that was canceled. Management plan was the only really pending. That's now resolved, so. Give you his year-end numbers last time. Move on to MHID. We have the board meeting is, sorry, the advisory committee meeting is today at noon, so I'll be participating in that. Do have a list in advance. I'll just give you a quick preview. What's some of the items that are going to be reported out and discussed at that? Let's see, on the MH side, we have, of course, the Behavioral Health Commission report update. You recall, this has been discussed before, Act fifty-four established that Commission for Adult Mental Health, twenty-four-member commission, and they're to provide recommendations to the General Assembly of the allocation of the one-time hundred million dollar funding for those, for the needs that are existing. The findings of that are online, and we have a link for that. Anybody who wants to take a look at that. The legislature has not finalized the allocation of those funds. And essentially, they were waiting for the new administration to take office, which they now have. So participating, that was probably recently soon. Year-end training updates on the suicide prevention, the QPR, the question to persuade and refer training. The task force trained two hundred and twelve people in the QPR last year. That's the total, two twelve. That's the highest number that it trained since the task force was started in May of twenty sixteen. So quite a lot of experience under the belt now. It's a lot of folks getting trained. We have to train a lot more, so. Case management data administrative case management continues to serve about ten percent more individuals than it did in fiscal year nineteen twenty. So we're seeing elevated case levels. Crisis intervention grant update. Everybody, I think, was well tuned in on that, but that we did receive the notice. You were all notified on that, that the regional crisis walk-in, walk-in center grant was awarded. Any reports they've met with Dolphin County for the initial phase of the RFP development, and as that develops, it will be keeping us up to date. Also, currently working, they're working in partnership with Franklin County and have submitted. This is on new program development. They've submitted a proposal and budget for the regional long-term housing. This is under executive review with the Office of Administration. More coming on that, on the IDD side. UCP, Super Paulsy, which is a provider for us, still has not been able to hire enough staff to reopen two of their programs, the ones at Pecan, it's very annoying, it's been longstanding issue. Also, they're, they're continuing to monitor the COVID situation and making the changes to the operations that continue to challenge them on that. The data, the current data they're operating under is the COVID numbers are declining. Now, this is rearview mirror, of course, from nine cases in December, one case so far in January, but this data is, as of the nineteenth, we're not sure if it's been updated at all. We're all hearing headlines about elevated case levels again, so something to keep an eye on, definitely not finished with that issue. So staffing crisis continues to be a dominant issue for the providers. They are not accepting new referrals for residential services. And staff has continued to have regular discussions with each of the providers, trying to find ways that to address very specific staffing deficits and see if there's anything we can suggest for them. So that continues to be just an ongoing managing, management problem. Again, for a problem that's in flux, but continues to vex our, our providers. So complex case meetings, the staff, the MH staff, along with CYS and the members of the state team are identifying barriers and possible strategies regarding complex cases, multi-level, multifaceted cases. That process continues to rule through project search. Second rotation right now for our current class, third rotation begins mid-March. Graduation May thirty-first, and the recruitment process for next year's project search is underway. We'll have more on the fiscal information after today's meeting. I did get an update from Janet over at KID. And they have, as you should be aware, pretty substantial plate full of activities, and they are executing on that. I'll give you a quick partial list of some of the, of the updates that Janet provided to me. This is partial. So the strategic plan implementation is being worked out at the staff level. That's very important because it's going to guide everything else that's done. Janet's working with the committee chairs to make plans for the year, so we stay on track with that. Administrative implementation, implementation plan for the strategy to improve the organization is being developed. Second interviews for the new Economic Development Manager being conducted. She repeat, reports they have received, seen a number of loan and grant requests, and higher bank rates are creating demand for our product. So obviously reflection of what's going on in the, in the marketplace now. And underscoring the role that KID can play in the community here. See, just a reminder, the new coffee and chocolate trails is scheduled to launch February one. It's right around the corner. That'll go through May thirty-one. They're working on a number of media opportunities. I don't, I won't go into those detail right now. And I think that'll, that'll do it for now. I can, I'll send around the written summary of what she provided more to me, in case there's anything of interest there. That's how we
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Foshee.
Well, good morning, everyone. The first thing that I have is that today over the lunchtime, Senator Casey will be here in Carlisle. He is bringing with him three people from DC, a policy advisor, a legislative aide, who's also an IIJ implementation coordinator and a legislative correspondent. His office called me yesterday afternoon, two thirty PM, wanted to either meet with an economic development person or a housing person. They are on their tour today. So Mary Kuna was available, and she, they will be meeting with her. They're going to talk about housing needs in the county, what we have, what we could use. Those things are really important. I know Commissioner DeFilippo, they have a board meeting at noon, so I'm, I'm hopeful he'll be able to join us for that meeting. I think that would be really excellent. This is Senator Casey's third visit to Cumberland County since September. So I think Stacy, that putting, you put together that fantastic list of needs for the county, I think that was incredibly helpful. I just continue to, to work with him. The LEPC met earlier in January, and one thing that came out of that meeting is that there've been two train derailments in Cumberland County, and there were two in the month of December. So our LEPC hazmat team is going to try to work very closely with Norfolk hazmat and build that relationship so that we are aware of those kinds of things in a timely manner. The library met, I would remind you to use the library system. But they did, the board did go ahead and approve the memorandum of understanding with the Cumberland County Commissioners. The board also reorganized, and again, Linda Rice will be the twenty-twenty-three president, the vice president will be Ken Hutchinson, and John McCree will be the treasurer. The Western Cog met, and the biggest thing that came out of that meeting, county, and this is a countywide issue, and it just happened this morning on Hanover Street, when I came in from planning. When you got down here to the slight, everything was stopped because there was a low-hanging wire. And then, of course, the public safety, you know, we got the public safety notification about it. But in the Western Cog, they've got lots of utilities with wires down all over the western side of the county. They have a very hard time of getting, time getting a hold of those utilities. Sometimes it's three or four days before they will even come out and take a look at it. So some of those municipalities have, are now doing right along with utilities to point out problem areas in the county. I think that's a good idea, but, you know, responsiveness to a downed wire is incredibly important. The federal firefighter, firefighter grants just opened, January ninth. So the assistance to firefighters grants, the AFG, the application period commenced January ninth, twenty-twenty-three. And of course, I have said this over and over again, I will continue to say that Senator Casey's office is more than willing to write letters of support. I connected a group on Friday evening with his office, so that's out there. There's also money out there federally for communications for firefighters, so I think that's a good thing for everyone to be taking a look at. Finally, planning met this morning. It was very good to be able to stay for the entire time. So that board reorged, and Heather Schweitzer is the chair, and Tim Johnson is the vice chair. The North Middleton Township Comprehensive Plan was, was recommended, approved. The Hampton Township zoning map was recommended, approved. The Hampton Township Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map was recommended, approved. The South Middleton Township News and Ordinance Text was recommended, approved. One of the great things that planning has done is if you go to the website, anyone can see the entire board packet. You can see it before the meeting. You just go in there, you click it, this packet was over four hundred pages. So it's there. You can get to all of it, every, every piece of that planning meeting. There's a new student member of the Planning Commission. His name is Ian Thompson. He is from Shippensburg University. He is a Shippensburg area resident and a poli sci major. He has an interest in planning, so he is now serving on the board. Joseph Zune resigns. He works for Shippensburg, Shippensburg University, and he resigned from the board because his duties at the university have really escalated. So he just doesn't have the time to commit anymore. To the summaries. So the Conservation District came and gave an update. They talked about how on the western side of this, of the county, there are lots of new poultry operations, nine new ones in the past two years. Public safety was there, and they talked about, Mike Snyder talked about how planning, public safety, and GIS are getting together and talking about the addressing issue with municipalities. Mike talked about next generation nine-one-one. And planning will be doing their growth trend report for twenty-twenty-two. They're working on it right now. It is not available at this moment, but year-to-date for all of twenty-twenty-two, there were one hundred and sixty-seven plans. The previous year, there were one hundred and fifty-one. And year-to-date, we're looking at one thousand, two hundred and seventy, oh, no, this is just for December, one thousand, two hundred and seventy-one new lots in Cumberland County. And MPC, fifty-three total reviews for the year. So that is what I have. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner DeFilippo.
Yes, thanks. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board, we met on January tenth for the year twenty-twenty-two, under the Down Payment Closing Cost Assistance Program, there were twenty-nine settlements. There will be another one sometime this month. There are still some funds from twenty-twenty-two, which will pass, be passed into twenty-twenty-three. But finding homes now is difficult mainly because interest rates are high. Though recently, we have seen a slight downward trend in them, so that will help more folks get homes. For the housing counseling, they're still doing workshops via Zoom. This will probably change in February, where there will be more one-on-one meetings. The Housing Stability Counseling Program is slated to end the end of January, but there's possibility it might be extended. Getting back to the first time home buyer program, eight hundred and fourteen homes have been purchased between nineteen ninety-eight and the end of twenty-twenty-two. Most of these homes are located in East Penn and Borough of Carlisle. The Emergency Repair Program, there are still, still, there is still twenty-seven thousand dollars available for projects. with projects. There are certain current projects, uh, in progress at the moment. But, uh, there would still, there will still be excess money to be pushed into 2023. The Bladed Property Board met on January 12th, and this, a lot of activity's been happening. Uh, 401 Front Street in Enola, uh, application for blight was approved. This property is located right on the river, and it has been bought and sold several times. It's in a flood plain, and it has been deemed unsafe. Um, 545 Hummel Avenue in Loin has been approved as blighted property. Uh, 6583 Carlisle Pike, Silver Spring Township, the blight approval has been retracted for 30 days. Uh, 44 West Main Street in Kingstown. Uh, same, and the same with 688 Three Wordsville Road, Silver Spring Township. The blight approval being made contingent on a potential property settlement. Additional information, 5425 Worthville Road, Hampton Township. Uh, there's been an application for a blight put in. Uh, 420 Bosler Avenue in Loin was acquired via tax sale. Uh, new owner has applied for demolition funding. Uh, the redevelopment authority is considering purchasing, uh, 318 Fourth Street in Somerdale and also, uh, 91 Beaver Avenue in Enola. They're both designated as blighted. Uh, 25 Penny Lane, Enola Demolition Fund awarded. And 6580 Carlisle Pike, Silver Spring Township, blight designation has been removed because the property has been cleaned up and repaired. And Capcom did not have a normal meeting, but it did have its annual meeting and annual dinner this past Monday. Uh, from what I recall, Perry County, Dalton County was representative, Cumberland County, all three of us were there, which I thought was a good thing. And coming up, uh, housing redevelopment today. Meeting is at noon. Gene, I'm not sure I'll be able to make the visit with Senator Casey. Uh, Agent Advisory will meet Friday, and the Conservation District meets, meets next week for our annual conference. Before I forget, folks, that will conflict with a public safety meeting, so I'm probably going to miss public safety. I'll send an email out just as a reminder. And that's all I have, Stacy.
Thank you, Commissioner. So that takes us then to Agenda Item U, and I'd like to report that an executive session was held on January 12, 2023, at 9:30 AM regarding personnel. And moving to the next agenda item, I'll ask if there's any other business to come before the board today.
I'll just mention, since Senator Casey's in, in town, uh, it'd be nice to pass one of us, which is recent.
I'll happily do that. My son's Tuesday night also, yes, I was. I'm sure he would want to. Any other, other business to come before the board today? All right, hearing none and seeing none, we are adjourned.